We'll call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, October 7th, 2013. I'd ask that you please stand for a brief invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, as always, we just want to ask for a blessing and guidance on the community of Batavia as the members of the City Council embark upon the businesses before us. We're ever mindful that we are faced with a number of challenges both within our own community and throughout the state and nation this evening. And we are here to serve our public and our constituents in the very best fashion that we can in a spirit of free and open debate and knowing that we are here to do the best we can for the citizens of Batavia. As always, we want to remember those from our community who are so ably serving on foreign soil in defense of the liberties of the United States of America. And we just ask that a special blessing be showered upon them and all of them, all those others from our country who are serving so honorably in our defense and preserving our liberties. Tonight, as always, we just ask for insight and appreciation and knowledge, knowing that each of us is here to do the very best we can on behalf of the great and grand community that we live in. We ask for all these blessings. Amen. Alderman Clark, would you lead us to the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ask the City Kirk to please call the roll.
Brown?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
ATAC?
Here.
Stark?
Here.
Alderman Chanet is absent. Wolf?
Here.
Sparks?
Here.
O'Brien?
Here.
Callahan?
Here.
Holman?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
Facilien?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
And we understand that maybe Alderman Chanet is en route on a Metro train.
Yes.
So that's always going to be a bit volatile, so we hope he arrives here soon. Moving then to item number four, which are items to be removed, added or changed on the agenda. Alderman Sparks, do you have that?
No, there are none.
Okay, moving then to item number five, which is presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Sparks is Chairman of Governmental Services Committee. Would you present this, please?
I'm passing tonight to the co-chair, Susan.
And tonight, we're going to accept and place and file the Plan Commission Minutes for August 21st and September 4th, 2013, the Joint Committee of the Whole Minutes for July 16th, 23rd, August 6th, 13th, 20th, and 27th, 2013, the Zoning Board of Appeals Minutes for August 21st, 2013, the August 2013 Financial Report. And approvals, September 27th, 2013 payroll in the amount of $737,331.86, September 27th, 2013 accounts payable check register in the amount of $4,615,000 to $4,615,250.3 and three cents, the City Council Minutes for September 3rd, 2013, Resolution 13-113R, a resolution amending the City of Batavia fund balance net position policy that came out of government services via Peggy Colby on 9/9/13 and Jake Howe of 9/1713, Resolution 13-120-R authorizing sale of lot of South Forest Avenue from Community Development through Scott Peuning 9/1013 out of the Jake Howe at 9/1713, Resolution 13-123R Health Insurance Consulting Agreement which came out of government services from Jason Bajer 10/713, the Jake Howe of 9/2413, Resolution 13-125R Easement Agreement with Harris Bank which came out of Community Services, Bill McGrath 9/2713, Jake Howe 10/113, Ordinance 13-39 amend Title Four of the Municipal Code by adding Chapter Nine regarding the regulation of body art establishments and amending Title Ten, Chapter 2.4 of the Municipal Code which came out of Community Development, Scott Peuning 9/2313, Jake Howe 10/113. I move that we place, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second, move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Sparks for the approval of the consent agenda presented. Any discussion? Not to Kirk, please call the roll.
Stark?
Susan.
Susan?
Oh. Hi.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
And Alderman Chanet just joined the meeting. We're voting on the consent agenda. Would you like your vote?
Aye. Okay, the consent agenda is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. And let the record reflect that Alderman Chanet has arrived and is now participating in the proceedings of tonight's meeting. Welcome. Okay, moving to item number six, our matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address the City Council this evening on matters not on the agenda? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is a proclamation of appreciation of service for Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall. And Alderman Stark, are you going to present this?
I am.
Are you ready?
Okay. Proclamation, whereas the record of uniformed service on behalf of the United States of America by residents of Batavia has long been an attribute of great civic pride in the history of our community. And whereas during the years of challenge that have found the United States involved in armed conflict on foreign shores, well over 2,000 Batavia residents have answered the call of their country and have served in these deadly struggles. As a result of their service to our country, 46 Batavia citizens have given their lives in the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas in response to continuing adversity and terror facing the United States in today's world, Batavians by the score are now actively serving in fields of battle in armed conflict around the world. And whereas it is the desire of the Batavia City Council to offer honorable recognition and acknowledgement to those residents who are returning from active duty in operations of battle and conflict around the world. Now therefore, in recognition of the service to the United States of America in which Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall of Batavia has recently completed, the City Council offers this proclamation of thanks and appreciation for the untiring, unfailing, unflinching devotion to duty which Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall has given in her commitment to the United States of America and its military branches. Signed Jeffrey D. Schalki, Mayor.
Make a motion for the approval.
I make a motion for the approval of this proclamation.
Second, move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Sparks for the approval of the proclamation. Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
And Alderman Chanet just joined the meeting. We're voting on the consent agenda. Would you like your vote?
Aye. Okay. The consent agenda is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. And let the record reflect that Alderman Chanet has arrived and is now participating in the proceedings of tonight's meeting. Welcome. Okay, moving to item number six, our matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address the City Council this evening on matters not on the agenda? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is a proclamation of appreciation of service for Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall. And Alderman Stark, are you going to present this?
I am.
Are you ready?
Okay. Proclamation, whereas the record of uniformed service on behalf of the United States of America by residents of Batavia has long been an attribute of great civic pride in the history of our community. And whereas during the years of challenge that have found the United States involved in armed conflict on foreign shores, well over 2,000 Batavia residents have answered the call of their country and have served in these deadly struggles. As a result of their service to our country, 46 Batavia citizens have given their lives in the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas in response to continuing adversity and terror facing the United States in today's world, Batavians by the score are now actively serving in fields of battle in armed conflict around the world. And whereas it is the desire of the Batavia City Council to offer honorable recognition and acknowledgement to those residents who are returning from active duty in operations of battle and conflict around the world. Now therefore, in recognition of the service to the United States of America in which Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall of Batavia has recently completed, the City Council offers this proclamation of thanks and appreciation for the untiring, unfailing, unflinching devotion to duty which Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall has given in her commitment to the United States of America and its military branches. Signed Jeffrey D. Schalki, Mayor.
Make a motion for the approval.
I make a motion for the approval of this proclamation.
Second, move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Sparks for the approval of the proclamation. Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
And Alderman Chanet just joined the meeting. We're voting on the consent agenda. Would you like your vote?
Aye. Okay. The consent agenda is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. And let the record reflect that Alderman Chanet has arrived and is now participating in the proceedings of tonight's meeting. Welcome. Okay, moving to item number six, our matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address the City Council this evening on matters not on the agenda? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is a proclamation of appreciation of service for Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall. And Alderman Stark, are you going to present this?
I am.
Are you ready?
Okay. Proclamation, whereas the record of uniformed service on behalf of the United States of America by residents of Batavia has long been an attribute of great civic pride in the history of our community. And whereas during the years of challenge that have found the United States involved in armed conflict on foreign shores, well over 2,000 Batavia residents have answered the call of their country and have served in these deadly struggles. As a result of their service to our country, 46 Batavia citizens have given their lives in the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas in response to continuing adversity and terror facing the United States in today's world, Batavians by the score are now actively serving in fields of battle in armed conflict around the world. And whereas it is the desire of the Batavia City Council to offer honorable recognition and acknowledgement to those residents who are returning from active duty in operations of battle and conflict around the world. Now therefore, in recognition of the service to the United States of America in which Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall of Batavia has recently completed, the City Council offers this proclamation of thanks and appreciation for the untiring, unfailing, unflinching devotion to duty which Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall has given in her commitment to the United States of America and its military branches. Signed Jeffrey D. Schalki, Mayor.
Make a motion for the approval.
I make a motion for the approval of this proclamation.
Second, move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Sparks for the approval of the proclamation. Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
And Alderman Chanet just joined the meeting. We're voting on the consent agenda. Would you like your vote?
Aye. Okay. The consent agenda is approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. And let the record reflect that Alderman Chanet has arrived and is now participating in the proceedings of tonight's meeting. Welcome. Okay, moving to item number six, our matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody in the audience that wishes to address the City Council this evening on matters not on the agenda? Okay, moving then to item number seven, which is a proclamation of appreciation of service for Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall. And Alderman Stark, are you going to present this?
I am.
Are you ready?
Okay. Proclamation, whereas the record of uniformed service on behalf of the United States of America by residents of Batavia has long been an attribute of great civic pride in the history of our community. And whereas during the years of challenge that have found the United States involved in armed conflict on foreign shores, well over 2,000 Batavia residents have answered the call of their country and have served in these deadly struggles. As a result of their service to our country, 46 Batavia citizens have given their lives in the ultimate sacrifice. And whereas in response to continuing adversity and terror facing the United States in today's world, Batavians by the score are now actively serving in fields of battle in armed conflict around the world. And whereas it is the desire of the Batavia City Council to offer honorable recognition and acknowledgement to those residents who are returning from active duty in operations of battle and conflict around the world. Now therefore, in recognition of the service to the United States of America in which Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall of Batavia has recently completed, the City Council offers this proclamation of thanks and appreciation for the untiring, unfailing, unflinching devotion to duty which Army Specialist Margaret Thompson Marshall has given in her commitment to the United States of America and its military branches. Signed Jeffrey D. Schalki, Mayor.
Make a motion for the approval.
I make a motion for the approval of this proclamation.
Second, move by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Sparks for the approval of the proclamation. Kirk call the roll.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Holman?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Facilien?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Thank you very much for your confirmation of my appointment. Moving then to item number 10, which is a presentation tonight on a housing study analysis on the City of Batavia. And as all of you know, I have some regional roles that I participate in, and I'm out of town a couple of days a week in Chicago. And some of the folks in the audience are the folks that I have interplay with in Chicago on a regular basis and are good pals of mine, so I'm very pleased to have them come out tonight and see what we're all about here. I'm going to turn this over to Scott for some introductions and a little bit of background about what we're about to talk about. Scott?
Sure. This is a grant actually that we received from CMAP. It's under the and it's a cooperative grant that was done with several municipalities in America, including Chico, St. Charles, and Aurora. And essentially what it is, it's a multi-jurisdictional study that's looking at all of our housing situation we have in the community, what we count, and then analysis of what needs to be done in the future for any of our community. So they're going through right now, this is mostly the data analysis stage of things, and then they will be coming back with some additional meetings and additional information as to apply all of what will happen next year. Today is a presentation to show you what they've found so far, some of the information that they've found, and they're doing this for all four communities over the period of the next several weeks. And then there'll be a workshop actually in November where we'll invite the community and we'll have some interactive activities to do to try and get some information from the folks in town as to what they have to see as a community as to so. So tonight we have Ellen and Brett from Kane County that will give the presentation tonight as to what they've found so far and the rest. So with that, I'll turn that over to Ellen and Brett.
Mayor and City Council members. My name is actually Allison Milled Clements, and I'm with the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus. We're one of the partner organizations on the project along with CMAP and the Metropolitan Planning Council. My colleague King Harris from the Metropolitan Planning Council is in the audience as well as Brett and Ellen from Kane County and Mark as well from Kane County. One thing that's unique about this cluster is we have actually been training Kane County staff on this process as we're working with a cluster of other communities in the area. And they are really kind of taking the lead role on this project. And what we're excited about is it really is increasing the capacity of the county to bring this project to other communities in the area. So we're really excited about this partnership, and they will be leading the presentation tonight but will be also available for questions. Just a little bit of background on the project, we've been working on it since the year 2005. Thus far, we've written reports for 23 communities. We're working on it right now in eight other communities, and we'll be moving on to some communities in DuPage and Lake County so that by the end of next year, we'll have done this report in 39 communities across the region. And I think it's been a very valuable tool for municipalities that have participated in the past. It's really taking a look at who's living in your community today and who's projected to live in the municipality moving forward, and does the current housing stock kind of meet the needs of the current and future population? And we kind of help you think about some policy recommendations that you can work on moving forward to make any adjustments maybe that would be needed based on that future growth. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Brett and Ellen to make the presentation, and we're available for any questions you have at the end. So, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right, so we're here tonight to kind of introduce you guys to the Homes for a Changing Region Project that's being done here in Batavia. And then we're going to present you guys with the initial data analysis, which is basically showing the supply and demand currently and then out to the year 2040. So as Allison mentioned, the Homes for a Changing Region Program likes to take a look at clusters of communities. So Batavia is part of the Central Fox Valley Cluster, which includes St. Charles, Geneva, Batavia, and North Aurora. And because really, housing issues aren't constrained by municipal borders, and a lot of the issues can best be planned for by combining resources between the communities. So as this goes on, maybe you guys can think of ideas where it might make more sense to go at it as a group of four communities, and then there are issues that are going to be specific for Batavia. And so there is going to be a plan with specific recommendations for Batavia, but there's also going to be subregional recommendations. So to begin, I'm going to provide you guys with an overview of the Homes for a Changing Region Program. From there, we'll talk about national and regional housing trends and how they might be affecting you guys here in Batavia. And then I'm going to pass it over to Ellen, and she's going to get into some of the initial data that we've found so far. So as Allison mentioned, the Homes for a Changing Region Program began in 2005. It's really evolved into a collaborative effort between the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, CMAP, and the Metropolitan Planning Council. Us here at Kane County are providing technical assistance to make it possible to do these plans. The process is free of charge to you guys through funding from the HUD Sustainable Communities Initiative, Chicago Community Trust, the Illinois Housing Development Authority, and the Harris Family Foundation. And it really is a new innovative approach to doing housing planning. It's people focused, so it's taking a look at the people who are currently living in Batavia. It's market based, so it's taking a look at the housing stock that's already in Batavia. Plus, in addition, we did a capacity analysis that shows with the current zoning and the current plan developments, how many more housing units can be added to the stock by the year 2040, and then it compares the supply and demand between the two. It's forward-looking, out over the next 27 years, and like I said, it's subregional. So now we're going to talk a little bit about national and regional housing trends. This is according to the Urban Land Institute. So populations are shifting to infill. Communities really are, suburban communities are urbanizing, becoming more urban. People's priorities are changing. People are more willing than ever to trade their large houses and their large lots for more energy-efficient, smaller units closer to a downtown where they're within walking distance to amenities such as a park or a grocery store, or maybe a medical facility, which is especially important for senior citizens who need to get around. And it really makes a lot of sense for communities like Batavia to at least take a look at areas where you can build compact mixed-use developments, transit-oriented developments close to transit options where you can walk and bike to different things. It's really a smart way to do things because you can, you have access to different bus routes and sidewalks or bike trails. You're not overburdening the transportation systems with traffic congestion. And it makes a lot of sense for communities too because you're raising your tax revenue per acre. You're not overburdening yourself in investing in infrastructure when you can reinvest in infrastructure that you already have. So as all this is going on, the demand is also changing in favor of renting. And so it also makes sense for Batavia to maybe take a look at, if you want to meet this demand with high-quality rental options, the demand's definitely out there. So now I'm going to take a look at four different demographic groups that are driving the new housing market. You have your older baby boomers, who are going to constitute a senior population that's unprecedented in size. Currently, there's about 40 million people over the age of 65, and according to the US Census, this is going to more than double in the next 27 years to over 80 million. So it's about 12% of our population currently. It's going to go right around 20%, maybe even over that. You have your younger baby boomers. A lot of them are becoming empty nesters. Maybe they have kids going off to college, or maybe they're looking to change homes to get a promotion and switch jobs. In either event, they're looking to rent more and more than buy another house. You have Generation Y, who they're renting housing far longer, they're getting married later, they're having children later. In either event, they're looking to rent more and more than buy another house. You have Generation Y who, they're renting housing far longer, they're getting married later, they're having children later. They're even getting their driver's license in less numbers than past generations. So they're also changing the housing demand. And finally, you have the immigrants and their children, many of whom are wanting to move to Batavia and be part of a great community, access the school district, and they're finding the housing way too expensive, so they're looking to rent. So now we're going to talk a little bit about the Central Fox Valley Homes process and how you guys are going to be able to get involved. So we began back in July working with staff. We were identifying key development opportunities and just tossing around ideas. And that helped us refine our growth projections. And we came up with a capacity analysis that Ellen will be sharing with you guys shortly. Today, we're here with you guys to give you an introduction to the project and provide you with the data. In November, we're going to be holding a traditional and an online public workshop. The traditional workshop's going to be November 13th. The online workshops, it's going to be a website that's open throughout the month of November. And I'll talk about the differences between these two formats. But first, they have a lot of similarities. They both are going to present baseline data and future predictions to the community. There's going to be a visual preference survey that's going to show different housing types and architectural styles. And the citizens are actually going to say, yes, I would like this in my community, no, I would not. There's a mapping exercise where you can actually drag different housing types on a map, show what areas you want to preserve, show what areas you want to redevelop, show if there's greenfield sites you want to develop with single-family or mixed use. And by doing that, you're showing how you want to accommodate the projected demand. And then we're going to be using this input to start working on a key area visualization, which is basically what you see on the bottom right of your screen. We actually, well, CMAP sends it out to a consultant and they do like a rendering for a key area. In Batavia, the key area is going to be at the corner of Van Norwick and McKee, the old Siemens furnace factory site. And then an example of a traditional public workshop down on the bottom left was in West Dundee where you're actually rolling out paper maps and placing the stickers on the maps. And then the websites are a very interactive site that CMAP set up and you're actually just clicking and dragging icons onto a map. So it's very similar, but it's going to get the most people, get the most input. From the months of December all the way through May of 2014, we're going to be working with staff and working with you guys. We're going to bring you draft recommendations and you're going to give us your input. You guys are really going to have a lot of opportunity to drive what direction we want to take this. And then we're going to come back to you guys, I think, in mid-December with some draft recommendations. We're going to be finalizing the municipal recommendations first and then concentrate on some subregional recommendations. And we're looking to complete the plan in May of 2014. When the plan's all done, it's going to include a summary, an existing conditions report, a housing analysis report, project future housing needs, a capacity for growth, future housing conclusions, section on sustainability, an optional urban design focus area, and then recommended strategies in a conclusion. And something else that we wanted to point out is the Homes for a Changing Region policy planning is consistent with Kane County's 2040 Plan. The Kane County 2040 Plan's the comprehensive long-range plan in Kane County that was adopted in May of 2012. And along with the adoption of the plan came the creation of the Kane County Planning Cooperative, which is the central core of the 2040 Plan's implementation strategies. And the cooperative is a collaborative effort between the Health Department, the Transportation Department, and the Development Department. And one of our primary goals is to help municipalities fill in the gaps in local planning resources by providing technical assistance. So this is a great example. By having the cooperative, we've allowed Batavia to have success in receiving the CMAP's LTA grant. And the map on the right shows that Batavia is one of eight communities currently engaged in this Homes policy planning. And so that's just something we wanted to point out. So the 2040 Plan also identifies four major challenges. These challenges are brought about by a lot of growth that's projected over the next 27 years. We have 270,000 more people expected in Kane County, 94,000 more households, and 144,000 more jobs. And it's really important to meet this challenge with safe, affordable, and diverse housing, which is what the Homes policy plan is doing. And if we can do this in a smart way, by providing transit options and not overburdening our roads with traffic congestion, by having walkability and bikeability, we're going to be able to maximize the mobility and connectivity in Kane County. If we're able to preserve green space and open space, replenish our aquifers, we can do this by doing infill development and not developing greenfield sites. We can replenish our aquifers and have great water supply going forward. And all of these things work together to have a healthy population here in Batavia and Kane County. That's really what the 2040 Plan aims to do. So now I'm going to pass it over to Ellen. She's going to give you guys the initial data analysis.
Hello. As Brett said, I'm going to present some of the data that we've found so far. And this data is going to be covered and analyzed further in the Homes policy plan and will be used to inform our recommendations later on. So some basic information about Batavia, according to the most recent American Community Survey, population as of 2011 was almost 26,000 people, up 8% since 2000, with about 9,200 households, an increase of 9%. Median household income was about $88,000 and 8% of the population was below the poverty line. As far as race and ethnicity, 87% of the population is white, followed by Hispanic or Latino at 6% and then African-American at 5%. And now moving on to housing data. Batavia, as of 2011, had about 9,000 total housing units. Almost three-quarters of these are single-family homes shown in blue, or single-family owner-occupied homes, owner-occupied is shown in blue, renter is red. Single-family attached homes, also called townhomes, make up the next most prevalent housing type. And almost 20% of Batavia's units are multifamily units with multifamily structures of two or more units. Most of these are renter-occupied, shown in red. So this graph shows the incomes of owners and renters living in Batavia. The largest number of occupied units are made up of households with incomes over 150,000, followed by incomes between 100 and 150,000. Most of the higher-income households are homeowners and at the lower and mid-income ranges, renters become more prevalent. So for the Homes policy plan's affordability of housing is defined as a percentage of household income and is divided into three categories. So housing that is affordable or attainable costs about 30% of a household's income. And this includes all housing costs, including utilities, insurance, and taxes. So taking into account transportation costs as well, the two shouldn't account to more than 45% in order to be considered affordable. Unaffordable housing costs over 30% of a household's income or over 45%, including transportation. And severely unaffordable housing costs over half of a household's income. And in general, households that are paying an unaffordable amount for housing may have difficulty meeting other needs. So this graph shows the difference in affordability in 2000 and 2011 for homeowners. Overall affordability for homeowners decreased from 2000 to 2011 with about three-quarters of homeowners paying an affordable amount in 2000 and 10% fewer in 2011. Households paying over half of their income increased from about 7% to 12% in 2011. And for renters, the trend is similar. Fewer renters pay an affordable amount than homeowners, though with 65% in 2000 decreasing to 53% in 2011. And like for homeowners, the number of renters paying over 50% of their income increased to about 32% in 2011. And this trend of decreasing affordability is seen throughout the region over this time. So now we're going to be moving on to some housing projections. This is kind of the meat of the data today. These graphs are comparing current housing supply with current housing demand and future housing demand. CMAP provided the 2040 projections based on the methodology they used in their Go-To 2040 Plan, which is the regional plan for the Chicago region. So in this graph, orange bars show the occupied housing units affordable at 30% of income for each of the income group ranges shown on the bottom. Light blue bars are the current demand for housing affordable at those income levels and dark blue is the projected future demand in 2040 at each income level. So as you can see, demand is projected to grow across income levels by 2040, shown in the dark blue bars. So Batavia has an adequate supply of housing affordable for households with incomes between 50 and 150,000. Supply is greater than demand in 2011 and is projected demand, it's also greater than projected demand as of 2040, meaning that the existing supply of housing affordable at those income levels is expected to remain sufficient if no new units are added. However, for homeowners at the lower household income ranges and incomes over 150,000, demand was greater than supply in 2011. This concern is mostly at the lower end of the spectrum, meaning that currently the houses at the lower end are paying an unaffordable amount for housing due to lack of supply at a price they can afford. Demand is expected to grow at those income levels out to 2040, meaning that if supply remains the same, the gap between supply and demand will widen by 2040. So now, this graph breaks down the household income data by age groups so we can see which age groups will be driving that demand out to 2040. So the most growth in demand for owner-occupied housing, as we saw, will be in households with incomes between 15 and 35,000. About half of these will be people between ages 25 and 44, and the other half will be seniors. And these age groups are expected to grow in Batavia for all categories, all income categories. So now we're going to move on to renter supply and demand. This graph shows the current supply of rental housing affordable to the different income groups in orange compared with current demand in light blue and projected 2040 demand in dark blue. As you can see, demand for rental housing will increase across the board out to 2040. So in 2040, as well as currently, there's a sufficient supply of rental housing affordable to renter households with incomes between 35 and 100,000. And that supply is expected to remain sufficient out to 2040. However, for renters with household incomes less than 35,000 and greater than 100,000, 2040 demand is expected to be greater than current supply. Like with owner-occupied demand and supply, demand was also higher than supply in 2011, but the gap is expected to widen by 2040. So this graph shows that the increase in demand for housing affordable to renters at the lower income spectrum will be driven largely by seniors, shown in purple, and also those ages 25 to 44, just like for homeowners. Increases in demand at the higher end of the income spectrum will largely be driven by middle-aged populations, generally in their peak earning years. So now moving on from some of those projections, looking at current capacity of Batavia to grow in housing units. This is an important part of the Homes process. It's also called a build-out analysis. We formed it by identifying with the help of city staff vacant and redevelopable parcels in the city right now. The capacity shows the maximum number of housing units and types of units that could be developed in Batavia based on the current zoning ordinance and the density allowed under each zone. And then the acreage of properties that are vacant or redevelopable. So it's kind of a lot of information on one slide, but it basically shows Batavia's current capacity for the number of units that could be added by zone. So in total, Batavia currently has the capacity to build between about 2,300 and 2,600 housing units. About nine of these are small lots, single-family homes, so houses on lots less than 8,000 square feet. About 440 are large lot, single-family homes, up to 550 townhomes, and up to 742 multifamily units. So as you can see in the top-left box, Batavia is projected to grow by about 3,500 households by 2040. So compared with the city's current capacity to add about 2,600 units, there may be a gap between the potential supply and expected demand at this point in time. So these findings, along with the rest of the data we presented today, will be used to inform the plan's recommendations for how Batavia could adapt to projected demand and changes in preferences over the next 30 years. Now, that's a lot to digest, but I'm going to talk about some next steps. As Brett mentioned, the public workshop will be here in this room on November 13th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And the public input website will be available through this link from November 1st to the 30th, so it'll be open at any time. If you click on this link now, it's not open yet. It'll be open November 1st. And as we said, the staff will review recommendations by mid-December and then we'll be back here in February to present them. And plans will be finalized in May. And that's all we have for you all, and we'd welcome any comments or questions.
Any comments or questions from the city council?
How did you arrive at the population increase?
That was based on CMAP projections. There's a whole methodology. We've shared the link with city staff. They have a pretty extensive methodology they used for the whole region's projections. So staff could get that link to you guys. You can check it out.
Question, how would this be integrated into, sorry, go ahead. How would this be integrated into like city services and school overcrowding and wastewater, you know? Is that something that the city would do after they got this to see what we can, what we need to do?
Yeah, I mean, this is kind of the first step of the process to try and figure out, you know, the capacity analysis and, you know, what our needs are. It's kind of the first step in the whole review of what the community needs. And the schools and the other things with utilities and such, that would come later on once we figured out, you know, what the baseline is. And then we can make some, you know, decisions on policy direction if we want to change the way things are happening. So if we think that, you know, some of the future units or future zoning for some of these areas don't make sense anymore, that's something that, you know, we can certainly review and, you know, make future decisions on.
So in regard to our wastewater treatment facility, I mean, just having information like this will help us make our decisions, obviously.
Two things quickly. One was, I noticed you have an updated slide on the capacity analysis from, is that updated information available to us?
Yeah, we can get you the updated. That was just updated after we sent out the information to the council.
I understand. But I found this was really helpful and valuable stuff. I was also, I also noticed in the shift of population to infill sites that that's increasing. Where did you get that information? Because I'd like to look up more on that.
There's a lot of stuff on that. The stuff is from the Urban Land Institute. I know, I just read a book, it's called Reshaping Metropolitan America. And there's a lot of the same stuff in there, a lot of the same trends. But yeah, the stuff, Urban Land Institute was where we cited all that stuff from.
Do we have local statistics that reflect that? Or was this more like a broad-scope, a broad-scope look at what's happening across the country?
That was national and regional. So I think CMAP has a lot of stuff that shows the same type of things going on, but yeah, nothing very local.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to thank all of you for coming out and sharing your initial findings with us. I think it's very important that we keep the city council at the front end of this thing so that they have a handle on all the research and the information that's being generated and, you know, gained from all this. I just feel that at the end of the day, Batavia's going to be the ultimate gainer because, number one, you give us a greater understanding of ourselves as a community. And then secondly, you provide us with a vision about where it is we should be going. And as we have toured around, I had the opportunity to have Mr. Harris, who's in the audience, and his assistant Nancy Furfer in my car for three hours one day and gave them the Cook's Tour of Batavia. And we bounced a lot of alleys and I shared some history with them and whatever. And I was very pleased with the comments that they had specifically, and I mentioned this in my coming column in Neighbors Magazine, that they were very complimentary about Batavia's commitment to restoring older housing. There's a lot of places where the older housing stock is allowed to kind of disintegrate and come down, whereas in Batavia, it was least quite obvious to two people who don't live here but who study this on almost a day-to-day basis, that Batavia had made a real commitment to kind of replenish and restore and revitalize our older housing stock, which historically had been built very, very well by, in many instances, early, you know, not Native American carpenters at the turn of the last century or whatever. So we were, as a community, very fortunate that we had a good housing stock to begin with. And the nice part about it is, as they pointed out to me quite frequently during our tour, that there's been a lot of efforts to bring that housing stock back up to a greater and grander fashion than it was when it was initially built. So I think that's one of the things we should be very pleased as a community, that we've got kind of that badge of honor that we can wear about how nicely we've handled our housing stock to this point in time. So there's a lot of things that this process brings out. And I'm pleased too that we have a partnership with Kane County because they're kind of, you know, the leader for us from a regional perspective. And they're helping to tie this together with our neighboring communities and so that everybody kind of is on the same page here and it's not a competitive thing. It's more of what we can do to help each other and help ourselves as a region. And one of the things that we are trying to do in a regional perspective, whether you're a resident of the city of Chicago or somebody that's living out here 35 miles west of downtown, is we're trying to get away from this old day of the city was one place and the suburbs were something else and one of us was better than the other one or whatever have you. We are one region and the great and good things that happen only happen because we work together in commonality and bring together all the talents and forces in the region that make things happen on a positive nature. And the good things that seem to be happening, at least my historical experience, is it's only when you bring all those forces together and they work collectively that we really accomplish something. And I mean, I guess that's a message I wish I could share with the US Congress tonight, that we could bring people together to collectively talk. But we are as a region, and I'm not trying to boast here, but this region has really done a lot the last few years to kind of break down the old values and set forth a new course of action where this is one region, six counties or nine counties or whatever we are, and really working together to bolster this region. We are the third-largest region in the United States of America and we really have a lot to be proud of because we're the central part of the entire country right here. And this is where a lot of things can happen. And I think it only bodes well for a very bright future for us if we continue to build on this. So I'm all behind this. I think this is a great step forward. And, you know, as Alderman O'Brien picked up on, you know, we've got some interesting population numbers if you throw in the Siemens development and the Moose Art If you throw in the Siemens Development and the Moose Art Property and some of the other things that are still kicking around there, you know, we could probably plug another 5,000 or 6,000 people into Batavia in the near and far term here. And as we are seeing, trying to do with the Moose Art Property, we may have a lot of people down there, but we may not have a lot of kids coming into the school system as a result of the far-sighted annexation agreement that you guys put together, which age restricts that development. But it could end up being a really neat development for this town to have. So there's a lot of innovative thinking going on here, and I really think, at the end of the day, the furnace property, or the Siemens property, whatever you want to call it, at Van Ortrick and North Avenue, or Van Ortrick and McKee Street, really stands out as something that could be made very special for Batavia, as a variety of housing styles and types all blended together at that location, that would help to bolster the surrounding neighborhood and really open up the opportunity for us to offer a variety of new housing ideas into this community. So those are things that, you know, when we did that, we kind of took the chance that it's gonna happen. I think when the economy comes back, it will happen, but those are the types of things that I really think we should be trying to focus on as we move forward here. So, thank you. Okay, I guess we're done with that one. Moving then to item number 11, which is approval waiver of formal bidding for the iron backwash lagoon cleaning. Alderman Clark, do you have that one?
Water treatment plant on Fabian Parkway contains water filters that remove naturally occurring iron from the groundwater. The iron accumulates in the filters, and the filters are backwashed on an almost daily basis. As the iron is backwashed off the filters, it is discharged to a surface water lagoon, where the iron settles into the bottom of the lagoon. The lagoon is now very full of iron residuals, and the city has been operating the treatment plant for more than 20 years, and this is the first time that we've had to deal with the iron that's been in the lagoons. So we are going to waive formal bidding on this, which is the first item we need to approve because of the unique nature of this. Now, a lot of people do this backwash for the lagoons, so I'm going to request or make a motion that we waive formal bidding for this project.
Second. Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman O'Brien for the approval of waiving formal bidding for the iron backwash lagoon cleaning. Any discussion? Kirk hold the roll.
Clark?
Hi.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Alderman Clark?
Okay, so now Resolution 13-121R is to approve Stewart Spreading to do the work. This contractor will haul the iron residuals to a local farm field where it will be spread on the land. This is a permitted activity by the Illinois EPA. So Stewart Spreading has excellent references and performs the same type of work for several other Fox Valley communities, and so therefore I make a motion to approve Resolution 13-121R, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into agreement with Stewart Spreading, Sheridan Illinois, for the Batavia Water Treatment Plant, Iron Backwash Lagoon Cleaning, hauling and disposal of iron residuals for an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Second. Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman ATAC for the approval of Resolution 13-121-R, the iron backwash lagoon cleaning contract. Any discussion? Kirk hold the roll.
Clark?
Hi.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Alderman Clark?
Okay, so now Resolution 13-121R is to approve Stewart Spreading to do the work. This contractor will haul the iron residuals to a local farm field where it will be spread on the land. This is a permitted activity by the Illinois EPA. So Stewart Spreading has excellent references and performs the same type of work for several other Fox Valley communities, and so therefore I make a motion to approve Resolution 13-121R, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into agreement with Stewart Spreading, Sheridan Illinois, for the Batavia Water Treatment Plant, Iron Backwash Lagoon Cleaning, hauling and disposal of iron residuals for an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Second. Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman ATAC for the approval of Resolution 13-121R, the iron backwash lagoon cleaning contract. Any discussion? Kirk hold the roll.
Clark?
Hi.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Alderman Clark?
Okay, so now Resolution 13-121R is to approve Stewart Spreading to do the work. This contractor will haul the iron residuals to a local farm field where it will be spread on the land. This is a permitted activity by the Illinois EPA. So Stewart Spreading has excellent references and performs the same type of work for several other Fox Valley communities, and so therefore I make a motion to approve Resolution 13-121R, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into agreement with Stewart Spreading, Sheridan Illinois, for the Batavia Water Treatment Plant, Iron Backwash Lagoon Cleaning, hauling and disposal of iron residuals for an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Second. Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman ATAC for the approval of Resolution 13-121R, the iron backwash lagoon cleaning contract. Any discussion? Kirk hold the roll.
Clark?
Hi.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion to waive formal bidding, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Alderman Clark?
Okay, so now Resolution 13-121R is to approve Stewart Spreading to do the work. This contractor will haul the iron residuals to a local farm field where it will be spread on the land. This is a permitted activity by the Illinois EPA. So Stewart Spreading has excellent references and performs the same type of work for several other Fox Valley communities, and so therefore I make a motion to approve Resolution 13-121R, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into agreement with Stewart Spreading, Sheridan Illinois, for the Batavia Water Treatment Plant, Iron Backwash Lagoon Cleaning, hauling and disposal of iron residuals for an amount not to exceed $60,000.
Second. Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman ATAC for the approval of Resolution 13-121R, the iron backwash lagoon cleaning contract. Any discussion? Kirk hold the roll.
Clark?
Hi.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Resolution 13-122R is approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to 14, which is approval of a Class D liquor license for Taquira El Sazon, is that how you pronounce that?
Taquira.
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 Taquira. This came out of government services last week at a vote of 8 to 0 in favor of approving a Class D 1 liquor license for the restaurant next to the Batavia Creamery, and it was fully vetted through the police department, and the police department found no reason to not allow this liquor license to be given. And so I moved that we grant a liquor license to Taquira El Sazon.
Second. Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Class D liquor license. Any discussion?
I don't know if the petitioner, he was going to come, I don't know if he can.
Kirk hold the roll, I guess.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Motion by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the Resolution 13-126R, authorizing agreement, granting a temporary construction easement to Batavia Enterprises. Any discussion? Kirk hold the roll.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Resolution 13-122R is approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to 14, which is approval of a Class D liquor license for Taquira El Sazon, is that how you pronounce that?
Taquira.
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 Taquira. This came out of government services last week at a vote of 8 to 0 in favor of approving a Class D 1 liquor license for the restaurant next to the Batavia Creamery, and it was fully vetted through the police department, and the police department found no reason to not allow this liquor license to be given. And so I moved that we grant a liquor license to Taquira El Sazon.
Second. Moved by Alderman Stark, second by Alderman Wolf for the approval of the Class D liquor license. Any discussion?
I don't know if the petitioner, he was going to come, I don't know if he can.
Kirk hold the roll, I guess.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassiliyan?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
ATAC?
Aye.
Class D liquor license is approved, 14 yes, no-nos, none absent. Moving to 15, which is Resolution 13-126R, authorize agreement granting a temporary construction easement to Batavia Enterprises. Alderman Brown, do you have this one?
I'd like to defer to Alderman ATAC, she filled in for me at the CDC meeting.
And if I can interrupt just for a second.
That's right, you want to step out.
As Batavia Enterprises is a client of mine, I've been advised that I should recuse myself from the conversation and the voting.
Resolution 13-126R is a temporary construction easement for soil boyings and property investigation requested by Batavia Enterprises. We granted one of these earlier in the year, and in order that there won't be any delay, in case more soil boyings are requested, we're going to, or we're, I'm moving that we grant another easement. Do we have a second? Second.
Motion by Alderman ATAC, second by Alderman Stark for the approval of the Resolution 13-126R, authorizing agreement, granting a temporary construction easement to Batavia Enterprises. Any discussion? Kirk hold the roll.
ATAC?
Hi.
Stark?
Hi.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Ateck?
Resolution 13-126-R is approved, 13 yes, no no's, one abstention, or one absent.
One absent, yeah.
Okay, moving to item 16, which is approval of a Class G liquor license for Gibby's Wine Den for Batavia Chamber of Commerce After Hours Event on October 23rd, 2013, with the waiver of the fee. Any comments or questions on that one? That's a memo from me. Roger, this is going to be over at the old challenge on North River Street?
No, we're back in the old post office.
Okay. We've done these several times before, this is nothing. Anybody care to make a motion?
Remove.
Second.
Moved by Alderman Wolf, second by Alderman Clark for the approval of the Class G license for Gibby's Wine Den for the Batavia Chamber of Commerce After Hours on October 23rd. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Ateck?
Ateck.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Moving to item 17, which is the Administrator's Report. Mr. McGrath?
Thanks, Mayor. The annual street program is about to start. Neighborhoods have been notified, those to be impacted. Full details are on the city website, and you can always call the city's engineering department for other details. We're finishing the strategic plan presentations. You'll see the goals and objectives that you've already approved referenced in this year's budget, or next year's budget, excuse me. Those presentations will be brought to you over the next month or so. We're continuing our dialogue with the developers on the proposed Walgreens project. I think we received more information today, and of course, you acted tonight to help them with a temporary easement to explore what the technical situation may be on the, some of the property they're asking the city to convey to them. We're going to arbitration with our police patrol officers on November 7th. The, reference the budget again, the proposed budget is going to print soon, as is how we've handled this in the past, when you receive it, we'd ask you to please review it and send any questions in to myself, and then we will get, we will publish questions, or publish the answers to those, the entire council and to the community. We post those questions and answers on the website. So we hope to get a lot of technical issues out of the way before we have our actual budget meeting. The first budget meeting is on November 7th. Excuse me, I think it's November 9th. No, it is November 7th, excuse me. It's also, the proposed budget will also be on the website, and it's available for review and hard copy here at City Hall, as well as at the library. Wilson Street's moving ahead. If you look, you can see that all the planners are in, they're really going to town on some of the pavers. Some of the new traffic signal, signals are in. The new reconformed driveway at Harris Bank is done. And last week, I referenced a couple of issues we thought we were having, referenced some grades. I think we're, we've solved those issues, we're waiting for a couple of communications back, but I think those have been solved. We have an application in for an ITEP grant to the state. That's basically a enhancement grant for streets. They used to be self, they used to be streetscape grants. You didn't have to be doing real work on the underlying street as, like Wilson Street, there's really no underlying street project, it's all streetscape. Now, they've changed that program, it does have to be related to an actual street improvement. Batavia Avenue is going to be overlaid in the next couple of years, and of course, we're, have a major project in reconstructing Main Street, which impacts part of Batavia Avenue. So we've applied for an ITEP grant, we'll hear about it in November. We have no idea whether we'll get it or not, but in contemplation of that, the staff has already begun doing some preliminary planning. This entails the area of Batavia Avenue from Main Street to Wilson, and the staff went out and did a walk today, and we'd be having some meetings about findings. I think the major thrust on that area of Batavia Avenue is to try and work with the many, many driveways we have, which make it kind of a difficult pedestrian experience. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Any questions, Mr. McGrath?
I just want to thank staff and Karen Young in particular for this week with the, some of the streets, street work that's being done and being responsive to some citizens' concerns and anxiety about it. Very professional, very courteous, and very timely.
Thank you.
Yes, Senator, thank you.
Okay, moving to committee reports. Community Development, Alderman Brown?
I have a couple of meetings to announce tonight, Your Honor. October 8th, which is this coming Tuesday, tomorrow night, there's a meeting at 7:30. We've got a couple of items on our agenda. One is the signed variance at the Jewel Plaza. The other is the acceptance of a deed for 106 East Wilson Street. And then we're going to start to have some continued discussion on the Houston Street design, a memo went out on that a few days ago, so I hope everybody has a chance to look at that. And then some discussion on the timely building. Another meeting to announce is Historic Preservation is scheduled to meet October 14th at 5:30, and that's all I have.
Plan Commission is, I'm sorry, Plan Commission is scheduled for October 9th, this coming Wednesday, at 7:30. Public Utilities, Alderman Clark?
It looks like there's nothing on the agenda regarding Public Utilities for the next two JCO meetings, so we're waiting, waiting for something to show up, but I think we're good for now. Thanks.
City Services, Alderman.
Thank you, Your Honor. The building fee review is on the JCO meeting for tomorrow night.
Okay. Government Services, Alderman Sparks?
We have tomorrow night the building fee review and the microloan sea storm, and then that's it. Oh, no, and then on the 22nd, tank car standards, and strategic plan community connectivity.
Okay. All right, moving to item number 19, other business. Anybody got anything else this evening? Alderman Wolf, you got anything?
Last road, last road game Friday night up in St. Charles, at St. Charles North this week.
And the record is?
They are five and one.
Alderman Sun?
I just wanted to touch on what Roger had mentioned earlier. I'm sure a lot of you guys saw our posts on Facebook, and I know Joy's working on a press release. She was working on it earlier today, and in a couple of weeks, I'm sure Main Street will present also. But we won the three awards for Batavia Main Street, but really, it's, they're all awards for the entire town, because one of the awards was for design, and that, Bill actually worked with Joy to apply for that award, and that went to River Street and the Woonerf, and people were very thrilled about the whole design, and it was very cool. It's an award presented by the Lieutenant Governor of the state, so it's a award-winning street now, which is very cool. And then we won for economic restructuring and promotions as well. So you'll hear more about that in a couple of weeks, but I just thought it was really cool and kind of a testament to the city that River Street won an award, and communities all over Illinois were recognizing it and excited about what we did, so.
Was the Lieutenant Governor there, Bonnie X., who presented?
No, they recorded a video for us.
Okay, anybody else? I have a couple of things under the mayor's report. Number one, as all of you know, I want to publicly commend the Batavia Police Department for their work and their follow-through. We recently did a liquor control compliance exercise in the city of Batavia, in which Chief Shire's men went out, and we tested the 34 liquor licenses we have in the town to see if they would be compliant as far as checking young people under the age of 21 for their license. And unfortunately, I, we were all kind of shocked that the results of the exercise, where we had 13 of our licensees flunk the, the exercise, where they physically sold liquor, and the way this was done, the Batavia Police Department sent an undercover officer into the establishment before we sent in the kids, and the kids all had driver's licenses that said right on it, "I am not 21 years of age." And we had 13 different places either not see it, read it, whatever, and ended up selling. Well, within a few minutes later, they were all arrested and basically told, "You've just messed up." And so trying to get this message across and to also trying to maintain a, a spirit of respect and understanding amongst us and our license holders, I chose the, the way of sending each one of them a, what we could describe as a stipulation letter, in which they agreed to stipulate that, yes, they had violated the law, although we arrested each and every person that did it, and they were hauled into court and fined in every instance. But we also asked that they stipulate as a license holder that this mistake was made, and then based on their past record of working with us, in other words, if they had had previous issues where we had had other breakdowns of the system within their license, anybody who was kind of called a first-time offender was told in the letter if they would agree to the stipulation and pay a $500 fine to the city of Batavia, we would end it there and would not go forward and hold a full-blown liquor hearing where we would get into a whole bunch of things. And at the end of the day, I am pleased to report that everybody involved has agreed to sign the stipulation letter and pay their fine. And the resulting income to the, we have a city policy that's been in place for a number of years, that all fines that are generated by the liquor commission, commissioner's decision, are then put into a special fund administered by the Batavia Police Department for drug and alcohol abuse education and/or compliance alternative activities that they may put on, and a post-prom party being one that they make a sizable contribution to. And I am pleased to report that the fines that we've generated, and all that money will be used in that purpose, and because of the fines that we are now have assembled, we have now over $7,000 in that fund that will, I think, go a long way to allow Chief Shire and his men to do some creative educational exercises to the young people of Batavia about the need for drug and alcohol abuse education and understanding of the vital issue before them. So that's what's going on. The other thing that we did tell all these folks in the letter was, is that we will be back, and we will retest, and those that asked, that we offered them the opportunity to come in and meet with myself and the police department and talk about the exercise. We had several that wanted to do that, so they came in last week, and we, we had our conversation. And in each and every instance, we told them flat out that we will be back, and you know, we really hope that you've learned from this experience, and that we are following the BACIT training, where we educate them as to how to look for all IDs, and how to check it, and the whole bit, and that if they didn't, the next time around, we will get into some more serious penalties, and specifically, the one that I am led to believe hurts the most is we start suspending the licenses for days at a time in which they cannot sell any liquor in their establishment for X number of days. And that's, that's, I am told, is the real penalty that really, you know, hits them in the pocketbook and does some serious business issues for them. So hopefully, we won't have that, hopefully, a lot of lessons have been learned, because as they say, everybody has signed a stipulation agreement, and we've now assembled over $7,000, which will be used by the police department for educational purposes in that, that arena. Also, I just want to remind you that this coming Saturday night, down at the Batavia Moose Lodge, starting at 8 o'clock, is going to be the Annual Access Committee Toy Drive Comedy Show, and Patty Vasquez from WGN Radio is going to be the lead comedian. Alderman Brown, are you going to come?
Regrettably, no, I've got a family commitment that night.
Sorry, you won't, you won't be there?
No.
Okay, because Alderman Brown is normally a regular attender. I'll be there, so if any of you want to join me, I'll be down, and we're hoping for a good crowd. It's $10 a ticket to get in, and they're going to have some nice auction items, and there will be food and beverages available that you can purchase from the Moose Lodge, and it'll start, the food will start around 6:30, 7 o'clock, and the actual comedy show will start at 8.
You want to get there early so you can sign up for the silent auction.
You can sign up for the silent auction, and it is, it's kind of a family-friendly comedy hour, I will tell you. It doesn't get to be, you can go to some comedy shows, and they get pretty open-ended. These are, I think, are somewhat just good old-fashioned comedy, I'll describe it as. So if any of you'd like to join me down there, I'll be there. Also, I want to thank all those who have stepped forward the last couple of weeks. We've had some ribbon cuttings. This past Saturday, we had two at the new Batavia Nutrition Store over here on the avenue, and out at 715 Vintage out on West Main Street, and we were Facebooked, and Alderman Callahan and Som were there, and we, they always bring their cameras and give us public eyes. And we have another one coming up on Saturday, November the 2nd, at 1:00 PM, out at the Hanson Chiropractic Clinic, out in the 1900 block of West Wilson Street there, by Cross Maze Hardware. They're going to, they're in the process of fixturing out their facility, and they will be going, having their ribbon cutting on the, on the 2nd at 1:00. So I'd like to invite any of you who are around to want to come up for that one, that's when that will be. So it's nice to have some city council company with me, and I, I know the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street and all those who participate in these things with us appreciate us, more people the merrier, and it's always an interesting time to talk to the new business and find out why they're here, and what they want to do, and what we can do to work with them. So it's been a worthwhile exercise to go through. I can tell you that the city staff is actively working with several new businesses that are wanting to move into Batavia, and probably the big question on the street right now is, who bought Burger King? And Burger King building up at Houston and Batavia Avenue has been sold, but even Mr. Gill, who sold it, can't tell me who he sold it to, and I honestly believe he does not know, but he says he.
Just a, was it just a partnership when it was listed in the papers? I think it sold at the end of August.
It sold to Skyline Batavia LLC, and that generated a bunch of rumors. There is a restaurant in Cincinnati called Skyline Chili and Chicken that is quite famous. It's kind of like the Portillo's of Chicagoland, it's, that's what they have in Cincinnati. So this sale came out as Skyline Batavia LLC, so people thought that Skyline Chili had bought in here. I have not been able to either confirm or deny that one. I called Mr. Gill and personally talked with him about, "Who did you sell this to?" And he says, "I honestly don't know, they called and said they wanted to buy it." He says, "I went to Chicago to a lawyer's office, we had a transcontinental closing that was Skyped between Chicago and San Francisco. We did the closing over this transcontinental high-tech deal, and then when that was done, the money got wired to Chicago from Scottsdale, Arizona." And there's, any, any name I could tell you would be a rumor at the moment, and I've heard some stories, but I can't tell you for sure. As far as I know, we have not been contacted. The staff has not had no contact with anybody, but somebody has bought the Burger King.
I've seen no one over there.
And Alderman Wolf works on top of it.
Every day.
So, just so we get that one out there, as soon as we know, we'll let you know, but we don't know to this point in time who that is, so. All right, moving then to item number 21, which is a closed session to review the closed session minutes. So I entertain a motion for executive session.
Remove.
Moved by Alderman Vassillion, second by Alderman Saron. Kirk, take a, a roll call?
Vassillion?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Ateck?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Bill, do we have another thing we had to do with that? Is that one motion?
To, to relieve, release them. We had to accept them first.
Receive them, and then we, motion to release these to the general public. Second. Moved by Alderman Clark, second by Alderman O'Brien to release the approved minutes to the public for the committee, Public Utilities Committee. Any discussion? Kirk, call the roll.
Clark?
Aye.
Ateck?
Aye.
Stark?
Aye.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Sparks?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Homan?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Vassillion?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Motion's approved, 14 yes, no no's, none absent. Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment?
We adjourn the October 7th city council meeting.
Second. Moved by Alderman Brown, second by Alderman O'Brien. Kirk, take a voice vote.
All those in favor?
Aye.